Town of Maryville Town Council Meeting is called to order at 6:35. Please rise for the invocation of Reverend Roger Willis from Trinity Free Methodist Church, and also please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we firmly believe that everything we need is in your abundance and in your hands, that the wisdom we need is in you, that the love we need for one another and our community is emanating from you. We love you, Lord, for your provisions. We thank you, Lord, for leading us and leading this council. We thank you for those who have gone before us and laid big and little plans and done large and small things to make this town what it is today. Bless the deliberations tonight of this council. Guide their thinking, guide their feelings toward one another and toward our town. Bless from your abundance, we pray. We thank you, Lord, that you've given us peace and promised us your peace. Give our town and our community, our county, and this area of the world peace. Bless your children everywhere in a world full of turmoil with peace and abundance. Bless us, Lord, as we submit ourselves to your power, your wisdom, and your love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sitting in for Mr. Guernsey is Mr. Bruce Spires. Mr. Spires, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Here.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Geralcheck.
Here.
Councilwoman Barron.
Not here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman Whiting.
Here.
Councilwoman Miano.
Here. Six here, one absent. Petitions, communications, and remonstrations having had, we don't have any, we will go to the consent agenda. Accounts payable, register voucher, approval of July 9, 2013, approval of the Town Council minutes of June 25, 2013.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Standing committees, budget, finance, Councilman Geralcheck.
The only thing I have is we're moving forward with the GO bond for paving this year. That's the only thing I have right now.
Thank you. Councilman Pettit, Public Works.
Along those same lines, Madam President, there was a mix-up in the Public Works meeting tonight, so what I'd ask you to do through Mr. Spires is to place this as an agenda item for our workshop next Wednesday, the 2013 paving list, to be put under my committee for the workshop, and all seven of us can discuss it at that time as to what streets we're going to pave.
Very good. Anything else other on Public Works?
One minute, Madam President. Do you mean the list we looked at today, or?
No, the ones that will come out of the GO bond.
Okay.
I have one thing. The railroad crossings on Madison, we have been in constant contact with the Canadian National Railroad. We still have not seen any work being done. Mr. Spires, have you heard anything from Canadian National regarding?
I have not heard anything within the last month from them.
Okay, maybe perhaps we can do a contact to them?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll give them a call.
Very good. Council affairs, Councilman Span.
I have nothing, but I'd like to comment on the parade. I thought it was a grand parade for Maryville. I thought it was wonderful. They were very well organized. I heard that the sheriff, when they got in front of the town, they got, they were standing on the saddle.
Yes, they were. They were standing on top of their saddles and they were roping with the lasso or whatever they call that.
I would love to see that. That's unique.
Thanks to Craig Lamb, it was videotaped, so it will be on our website when Captain Donahue comes back from vacation. I'm sure he'll get it up there.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Bishemi or Mr. Petrush, guys, what's the exact interpretation of the state law on fireworks? I made a call Friday at noon, Joe, into dispatch, and the young man was very nice, but he said it was his understanding that they could light off starting at 5 o'clock up until July 9, and that was per the state law. And I don't know if it's because of the way the calendar is, I understand we follow the state law, but I've seen in Quickleys and I've heard other comments from people, especially those with animals. I was under the impression we were only doing New Year's Eve and 4th of July Day.
No. No, we're not.
You can go to the night, I think.
Is it the night?
The night.
Is it one week before and one week after, I think?
Joe, what's the?
I don't have the ordinance with me. I gave it out the last meeting. I got it in my office.
All right, just clarification FYI for my own.
I have it in radio, they have my.
They have it by, yeah, that's, he read it to me off the, yeah.
There is a time that this should stop, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These kids were doing it at noon, you know? If you want to start at 5 o'clock or whatever, when it's dark, that's understandable, but I don't know, I guess it's just personal.
Councilmen and members of the council and chief, he just stepped out. There is a state law that mandates that all cities and towns allow fireworks certain days around the holidays, certain times of day, and our ordinance exactly mirrors the state law. We don't allow anything beyond that, but we're obligated to allow state law mandates. He's looking for a copy. We can continue with other business. In the meantime, I'm on the Internet looking for it.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilman Geralcheck.
The only thing I have to report is the healthcare reform has been delayed till 2015, so we won't have to take any action with that as of this point right now. I'm waiting for an answer back. Mr. Bishemi, when will we be able to discuss the handbook? I know that I had talked to Rich about that, and he said that you were almost complete and you're probably a few weeks out or whatever, so.
Yeah, he and I have been working on revisions. Would you like to set a work session and a specific date to do that?
If, I can wait for you to tell me that you're ready to go, and then we can schedule it that following week or?
Will that be a full council work session?
Yes. Would we be able to meet in an executive session on that, or?
I don't think we'd be.
Because I know that we have some personnel issues or whatever, so maybe we can do the personnel issues, and then after that, we can discuss the book.
I don't think for just discussion to revisions of the town policy, there's any basis to meet in executive session, but I'll get you, Councilman, a date where our revisions are complete, and then you can schedule the meeting accordingly.
Okay, I'll do both of them in that one day. It's the only thing I have.
You have, and I guess we do have to have the executive session regarding employees.
Yes, I want to do it on.
So I would like to have it as soon as possible, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Public safety, Councilman Whiting.
No reports, except on the night of the 4th, I could hear the sirens all night, so I know they were, the police and the fire department was very busy that night.
Yes, they were. Anyone else on the public safety? Seeing no one else, I have a letter that I wish to read. It is from Commander Kajurna regarding a commendation to Chief Joseph Petrush. I would like to recognize Officer Allison Ellis and Officer Lance Schmidt for their efforts during a recent arrest of a burglary suspect. On June 4, 2013, Maryville Police Officers were dispatched to Speedway Gas Station, 98 West 73rd, for a burglary in progress. Officer Ellis was first to arrive in the area and curb the vehicle that was seen leaving the area near Speedway. Officer Ellis noticed what appeared to be a cash register in the backseat. The suspect vehicle then fled from Officer Ellis. Officer Schmidt then observed the suspect vehicle near 68th Place and Madison Street and pursue the vehicle. The suspect vehicle drove through several yards, causing damage to fences. The suspect family finally came to a stop when it collided with a tree. The suspect then fled on foot and was eventually apprehended by a Lake County officer behind Itting's School. The quick response and teamwork displayed by these officers led to the arrest of a burglary suspect. The suspect also had two active warrants for his arrest through the state of Michigan and was driving a stolen vehicle. Officer Ellis and Officer Schmidt will be recognized for their efforts by receiving a Level 1 commendation from Commander Kajurna. Again, chief, another, as usual, great job, and we do thank you sincerely. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Span.
I can't verbalize with the parade, that's what I'm, for Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Anyone else under Parks and Recreation? Okay, for all the hard-working men and women of labor, past and present, a dedication and groundbreaking ceremony will begin on Thursday, August 22, at 11 o'clock a.m. at our town's Union Park located at 7200 Broadway. Environmental Affairs, Councilman Geralcheck.
I'm going to defer to Matt Lake, and I think Mr. Hardaway has something to say about the collections of the caps for the benches.
Yeah. Go ahead, Matt.
Earlier today, the Stormwater Management Board held a special meeting to open bids for the Stormwater Building. A provisional bid was awarded to Panjar Corporation in the sum of $849,410. We're going to review those bids and make sure they're complete. At the last board meeting, the board actually awarded a contract for Robinson Engineering to complete the drainage plan for South Mar Park. That's for all the drainage within that subdivision. Today, I signed an agreement with Upcycle Products to officially kick off our new rain barrel program. We made some brochures that we've delivered to various offices within the town in order to promote it. We're going to put it on the town website. These are 55-gallon rain barrels made from recycled food-grade containers, and Upcycle handles all the money, and they order through Upcycle, and they even deliver it on a specific day. Our date for ordering, the deadline, is September 5 of this year, and then residents will be able to pick up the rain barrels on September 12 from 3 o'clock to 6 p.m. at Public Works. So a special pickup day for them. And then next year, we'll do a big event. I anticipate for this, and really promote it more and more, so that's going to be something that we'll see more of. At our next Stormwater Board meeting, Christopher Burke is going to do a special presentation on updates on the Stormwater Master Plan, and this is going to be regarding their findings based on a series of drainage studies. So it's going to be an interactive presentation, so we can kind of identify, see what they've done so far, and make sure that they're on the right path. And that's all I have.
Very good. Anyone else under environmental affairs?
Yeah, Madam President, if I could apologize, Matt, I was actually reading your email. And I don't know, I'm sure it applies to all of us, because we have over 170-some parcels, I think, don't we, Matt, on retention-detention pond?
That's correct.
And I've recently had a couple of inquiries. It affects my neighborhood personally, where the retention pond in the Preserve is privately owned now because of tax sale, and another gentleman from Sandpiper subdivision called me, and I had to tell him that Bruce's guys cannot go work on the ditch because it's private property. And so it looks like, Matt, that you had done this last year. Are we completely current? Because I know Mr. Patelis is going to be having a tax sale September 13, and I'd hate to run into any one of us in our subdivisions having somebody buy a retention pond, John, on tax sale, you know, the redemption and all this and that. Do you know, to the best of your knowledge, in the GIS, that we're all caught up on our tax parcel? That they're taking them out and they know that they're retention ponds?
Yeah, every time we scan through when the list comes out, we scan through them, and then those that look suspicious or look like detention, we bring them to the tax sale secretary, and she pulls them off of the listing. So, and I'm actually meeting with John on Thursday to discuss some of that as well, so.
And then I guess the question to John, you know, what can we do with the ones that have already in previous years gone to a tax sale, i.e. in my neighborhood personally? What do I do with this property owner who keeps coming into Durinda telling him he's going to build houses there? And I've told him there's not a snowball's chance in hell he's going to build houses on my retention, our retention pond to drain the neighborhood? What do we do with these guys?
With respect to the primary parcel that, trying to remember the gentleman's name.
Antonio Xavier?
Yes.
Antonio Xavier, yeah. I mean, that in particular.
He knows, he knows that there's no permitted use to construct residential, commercial, or any other, any other types of structures.
If it's platted, John?
However it appears, it does appear that he properly, when I looked at the material, discussed it with Durinda, Matt and I discussed it too. It appears he made a bona fide purchase at the tax sale, and so I think the issue is simply reacquiring the property from him. The problem, Councilman, has been when we initially had some discussions with him, his asking price is ridiculous in light of the fact that that parcel has no value.
Exactly. I was going to ask Matt or Durinda, since they're platted on the subdivision plaits and they're recorded, and in Sandpiper, it's a utility easement. Can we not use eminent domain to clean up how many ever we have, Matt, and just either through the town or Stormwater Funds and allocate the funds, and again, pay this guy back what he paid to the treasurer, if it's 2,500 or whatever you paid in back taxes, and get control of these however many we have?
There is.
I mean, I can think of two in Ward 6. I don't know what Ron's got, or Rich, or Don, you know, if there's any lingering ones out there that you guys know of that some private individual owns a retention pond, but this goes back to the Stormwater Utility.
There's a portion of the town code that prohibits us from owning defunct properties from PUDs that were detention. I think that was done intentionally, so we didn't take over all detention ponds after POAs, you know, end up not taking any responsibilities for them, so.
But then I can't get in, I can't get into Sandpiper, Bruce's guys can't get into Sandpiper and take care of the drainage for those residents out in that neighborhood.
Well, I think that's a different issue. I think what he's asking, Matt, is regardless of who the current owners of record are, for example, this tax sale purchaser.
Yeah, Antonio.
If there are utility easements, perhaps we can gain legal access.
Well, I mean, I know these two in my Ward were.
Simply due to the fact that that tax sale purchaser is buying subject to dedicated utility easement. So looking for easement access is one way.
Go back to the plat, Durinda.
That would be right on the plaits.
On the plaits, and we're enforcing the plat on a utility. I know Sandpiper, I think, is listed as a utility drainage easement, and so is Preserve.
We're meeting, actually, Thursday on that very topic.
All right, just keep me in the loop.
Well, I have a suggestion. If it's now privately owned, can't we get Code of Violations on it? Weeds?
I mean, if they're not maintaining it, I suppose you could, but.
Well, that's, our ordinance says that, and one off Whitcomb Street by that industrial, we never bought it back. Lady realized she couldn't build on it, and she let it go back on tax sales.
The parcel in Sandpiper, too, may set some enticement for a land trust. It's about 10 acres, it's forested, it might fit their criteria. So we have to negotiate with the owner of the property. He lives in Sherville, and his numbers, and all the numbers we tried to contact him through has been, so we have to do it by letter or something to get in contact with.
And I don't know, Madam President, I appreciate the indulgence. I don't know if this, maybe we want to add this, Tom, as a workshop item, have Matt come back in either in July or August and go through this, if you need time to compile, and maybe, I don't know, if you can do a breakdown by Ward, so each of the seven of us can kind of look and realize, okay, yeah, I've got this one, this one, this one, and Ron's got 10 or 11 or 12, and Rich has got, you know, just so we kind of know, if you've got that in the GIS database, if you can kind of show us. You gave me a bunch of the tax sheets, I know. Maybe if you can provide that, we can make this a discussion item for a workshop, Madam President.
There should also be a mechanism by which, you know, we are offered first option to buy, and that's not being done, you know, so there's got to be something that triggers that, so that the county or somebody gives us the first option.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, going back to the public safety, the question regarding the fireworks being discharged, today, July 9, is the last day that they could shoot off their fireworks. It has to go two hours after sunset, so roughly 10 o'clock tonight is the, they can't do it anymore. The next time around would be New Year's Eve between the hours of 10 a.m. on December 31st. No, that doesn't make sense, 10 a.m. I'm sure it's.
All day, huh?
All day on the 31st.
I doubt that.
Yeah, all day on the 31st, right, on New Year's Eve until 1 a.m. on New Year's Day.
Yes, till 1 a.m. on New Year's Day.
That's a, well, it's a 15-hour period.
Right. So I'm sure anything they have left over, they'll save it for later.
I think there was another update to this, because I think that we did something with the fines last year.
Yeah, we redid the fines.
Do we want to revisit this, guys, on the days? Do we have to follow these days, Joe's? That's the state law days.
That's the state law.
State law has preempt, unfortunately, in this area, state law has preempted the town.
Maybe we need to call Mr. Smith up and have Mr. Smith come back and see us.
Oh, I'm sure he will.
There's been a big escalation on the fines from the last revision.
Right. What's under environmental still, Madam Chair, is that our capathon for our cap drive is we have receptacle in the town manager's office here and one down at Public Works, and I appreciate the press's coverage of the endeavor, and we just encourage everybody to bring as many caps as you can to Town Hall or Public Works. Any detergent, aerosol can caps, or whatever, water bottle caps, and we're just looking to raise 800 pounds worth, so we can get two benches for the rain garden.
Very good. But no lids from the soft, you know, when you go to a drive-thru, the lids, the plastic lids.
None of those.
None of those.
But anything else, you know, the, I can't believe it's not butter, containers and all of those.
Rich, would Jeff continue this? I know you're trying to, your goal is to get two benches for the rain garden. Would Jeff continue this if we wanted to get some stuff out there?
Yeah.
So you get 800 pounds for two benches if we keep this thing going and we try and get two more benches out in front here?
It's only two benches per municipality.
Oh, is it?
Oh, it is?
Or entity, so saying us wanted two benches, the school corporation wanted two benches.
Can we buy them out of our recycling funds at a discounted rate?
I don't know that. I'd have to check with them.
Well, I'd like, I mean, we did all the, you did all the nice job out on the parking lot, Tom. I think we would want some for people to sit.
They're 600 bucks apiece.
Are they?
Yeah, and but what Jeff's does is Solid Waste picks up 400. No, Solid Waste picks up 200. If the 800 pounds will cover.
The 400?
The 400. The 800 dollars worth for the two. Thank you.
Okay, anything else under environmental affairs? Okay, moving on to elections and public relations. Our Independence Day Parade, I want to give sincere thanks to our Public Works Department and also our Police Department for all their assistance. As usual, they've done a phenomenal job. Tony Locke's retired superintendent of Maryville School was honored as our grand marshal. Special thanks to all of our volunteers with the parade lineup, Mr. Chuck Steyakovitch, Mrs. Linda Petrush, Ms. Pauline Petrush, our judges, Pam Palmatier, Laurie Barkovich, and Pete Gipp. The emcee was Lake County Treasurer John Patelis. The sound system was supplied by Brian Deering. We had this time five of the most impressive entries, other than breaking down into categories, we just, right off the top. In alphabetical order, Baker Square, Maryville. Crucial Creations, Gary, Indiana. Lake County Sheriff's Department, Mounted Police Posse, Crown Point, Indiana. Pipes and Drums of Orec, Tinley Park, Illinois, and the final, Villa de Soul, Maryville. Certificates of appreciation and awards will be presented at our next Town Council meeting. And it was, it was a great, it was a beautiful day weather-wise, the people came out, and it was thank you, thank you to everyone, all our donors. I have been sending out letters of thanks for donations, and also letters of thank yous for participation. I feel with doing this, it'll, it'll keep coming, the people will keep coming back to our town. Okay? I also have, on August 6, we will have our National Nights Out here at our Maryville Town Hall in the parking lot, beginning at 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. Various police vehicles will be on display. Crime Watch of Ward 1 and Ward 3 will have a booth with literature and free giveaways along with watermelon slices. Our Police Department will be offering hot dogs, chips, and drinks. Two bikes will be raffled off to kids from the ages of 7 to 16 years of age. A promise of Best Buy gift certificates will be raffled to adults. We will also have a mini taste of Maryville with the following restaurants participating: Baker Square, Abuelos, Texas Corral, Catch 22, Applebee's, Villa de Soul, Busy Bee, Sharks, and Eli's Proogies. Other games, prizes, and activities, and other food booths are being planned. I hope we have enough space out there in the parking lot. I mentioned at the Arbor Day at Stormwater, may put a booth in there, and I do thank you on that, too. We're also going to have a pie eating contest. It's going to be held with our police officers. The pies will be supplied by Baker Square. And for those who think that I would even allow to have any police officer with his face buried in a pie, it's so wrong, they're going to be sliced, plated with forks. And I also heard there may be a dunking tank supplied by our Judge Gina Jones. And Kenny, you're back there in the backseat, I guess.
I'm loading the balls myself.
Okay. So anyway, it's going to be a fun-filled day with tons of activities and a good time. And let our residents see our vehicles with the Maryville Police have what they do, plus have a little bit of enjoyment and fun.
Madam President, what time did you say?
From 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. on August 6. That's the National Nights Out.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want to, you know, volunteer to be in the dunk tank.
Yeah, I did it at Hidden Lake.
Did you really?
Quite a few years ago.
Well, it'll be fun. Okay, moving on.
Madam President, under Public Relations, I have one item that I'm going to pass on to Bruce through the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce. They are doing a very elaborate Membership Directory Community Profile magazine, and they've retained villageprofile.com. He's done several of these throughout the country. There is pricing in here for full-page ad, half-page ad, quarter-page ad, eighth-of-a-page ad. I believe the city of Crown Point is going to be taking out one of these. Bruce, we, I'd like, Madam President, to consider this for an agenda item for the next workshop, so we can decide. This gentleman has been contacting me since I'm on the Board of Directors at the Chamber, wanting to know if the town of Maryville will take out an ad. That's going to go over to 600, at least 675 members of the Chamber, along with others, so obviously our presence, I think, in some capacity needs to be identified in there. So if you wouldn't mind, Madam President, if we could put that on an agenda item for the workshop next week, and I can have Michael come, if you want to have that representative come answer any questions.
That'd be good. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Anything else on their elections and public relations? Seeing none, Economic Development, Councilman Geralcheck.
If you've noticed that the Route 30 project's almost done. So they're moving along there. The striping and everything should be done, and landscaping should be done soon, so I would imagine they're probably going to be out of there within the next three weeks or so. One other issue is, have you heard anything from NIPSCO or any utilities?
I have, and we're going to set up a meeting, Councilman, first with the appropriate Butler Ferment and Seifert rep and the contractor's rep to review exactly what the evidence is that we have with respect to their utility relocation delay, and then after we meet as a team on behalf of the town's claim, then we're going to set up a meeting to discuss it with the attorney. The response I've received from their attorney did not squarely answer our monetary demand. The response I received simply indicated that the matter is under review and that the attorney was willing to meet, to discuss it.
You're our contact person with that, so anybody from meets with anybody from NIPSCO or whatever.
Councilman, when we have our sit-down planning meeting, do you want to participate in that?
Sure.
As the representative of the council?
It's fine.
And any other council members welcome to participate, too. But we, in speaking with Butler Ferment and Seifert, we determined that it'd be best for us to meet as a team first, go over the evidence that we have. All parties share the evidence, contractor, the town. All parties share the evidence, contractor, the town. The meeting will involve Bruce, obviously, and the engineering firm, Butler Fairman and Seifert, and then set our meeting up with NIPSCO.
Sure.
Madam President, to Tom or Durinda, maybe even Bruce, have, number one, have we done all of our approvals for Berman's Infinity?
I'm almost positive.
Yes, that's done.
That's all done. Now, they've got a building permit, correct, Durinda? They're in there? Have you heard anything? Doesn't look like a lot of activity lately in the last couple of weeks, as I've been driving by there, I didn't know there was an issue out there.
That we know about? No.
Okay, all right.
No, we've done everything that we were supposed to do, and that was at the last council meeting, and that's all been recorded and done, so.
Okay.
That concludes my.
And the frontage roads do look nice, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay, Utility Liaisons, Councilman Pettit.
I have no report.
Okay. Under Town Government Reorganization and ADA Compliance, I have no report. Ordinances. First Ratings, Ordinance 13-25, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the Clerk Treasurers Fund. Administrative Secretary, decrease $700, longevity increase $700.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Roll call, Mr. Spires.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Goralcheck.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman Whiting.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miano.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Ordinance 13-26, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the Fire and Hazmat Fund from Clerk Treasurer, decrease $961.55. Secretary, increase $961.55. No change. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call, Mr. Spires.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Goralcheck.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman Whiting.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miano.
Yes, motion carries six to zero.
Madam President, I make a motion that we remove Ordinance 13-23 off the agenda. Under state law, rezones only require one reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway, to remove Ordinance 13-23 due to the state law, it only requires one reading. Roll call, Mr. Spires.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Goralcheck.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman Whiting.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miano.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Ordinance 13-24, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Park's Non-Reverting Fund of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2013, not included in the current budget, an emergency exists for the expenditure of money. The following sum was not included in the Park's Non-Reverting Fund, contractual services for $8,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call, I'm sorry, just one moment, please, let me get my, the roll call. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Roll call, Mr. Spires.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yeah.
Councilman Goralcheck.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman Whiting.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miano.
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Resolution 13-17, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing a temporary loan to fulfill monetary requirements necessary for debt service payment, retroactive to June 27, 2013. The Town Council of the town of Maryville has determined that it is necessary to make this loan to accommodate the shortfalls, and that there is hereby provided and ordered a temporary interfund load and transfer to pay for the purpose hereon specified.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Goralcheck. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries six to zero. We have nothing under BZA Actions. Do we have any old business?
I have just one item. We should have, I should have brought it up under Parks. The appraisals have all been done for the park properties that the town's looking to sell, and has been forwarded over to John's office, and I think John's ready now to sit down with the council and talk about exactly what procedure we're going to use to sell. So if we could add that on to our list of items for the workshop next Wednesday under Parks.
That's precisely, members of the council, the issue that needs to be decided is the method that we will use to attempt to dispose of the parcels, whether we'll do it by sealed bid, whether we're going to hire an auctioneer, whether we're going to attempt to dispose of the parcels through some other means.
Very good. Anything else under old business?
I have a question on that. I mean, if we hire an auctioneer, can we get some kind of pricing for the auctioneer?
Oh, of course, we would.
And that way, maybe we can discuss it or whatever at the workshop.
Very good, yes. Do we have any new business? Any new business? Seeing no new business, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Please come up to the mic, state your name. No public comment? Announcements. Plan Commission Meeting, July 16th at 6:30 p.m. Town Council Meeting, July 23rd at 6:30 p.m. BZA Meeting, July 24th at 6:30 p.m. The workshop, that will begin at 6 o'clock to discuss the parks and the method to dispose, and also we are to, Tom, since you're with Personnel, we need to have a Personnel meeting, please.
Is that on the 17th, Madam President?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. July 17th.
No, the workshop's the 17th.
You want a meeting on the 17th for Personnel?
We could have, we could have it either before or after, preferably before, maybe 5 o'clock. Okay?
I guess if you want to schedule one.
Yes, please.
Were we waiting for something?
I thought we were waiting on the books to come back and then.
Well, this has come up, I don't think it can wait.
Sure.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.